Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's City Planning Commission Public Hearing. My name is Dan Garadnik. I am the Chair of the City Planning Commission. Today's date is July 13, 2022. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, today's the day when we hear from members of the public on land use applications in public review and also from the applicants themselves. But we have a relatively light agenda today. Our sole public hearing is on 2080 McDonald Avenue, which is a proposal to build more than 60 new homes, nearly a third of them affordable, and a daycare near the F train along McDonald Avenue in Gravesend, Brooklyn. We look forward to a good conversation on this project. We're also going to vote today on several projects, including a building with over 160 affordable homes, most of them dedicated for seniors and a new church in Soundview in the Bronx, new offices for the Office of Court Administration in downtown Brooklyn, for the Queens District Attorney in Kew Gardens, Queens, and also for the city's Law Department in Jamaica, Queens. These new spaces are going to help these city agencies better fulfill their duties to the public, and they require a vote from this commission. I also want to note that today is the last hearing day for Commissioner Larissa Ortiz. And I just want to note that it was, Commissioner, over the past few months, a great pleasure to cross over with you. I have great admiration for you, your strong convictions, your expertise and passion about retail. We certainly are going to miss you around here at the commission and know and hope that you will not go far. But I just wanted to take a moment up top to express our thanks and appreciation and give you an opportunity, if you wish, to say a couple of words before we start today.
Thank you so much, Chair Garadnik. I appreciate that. And it has been such a distinct honor to serve on this body as a mayoral appointee for now seven years. I would love to acknowledge my fantastic colleagues, former commissioners Carl Weisbrod, Marisa Lago, Anita Lermont, and now you as current chair, and the amazing staff at DCP, who is truly world-class. I've learned so much from all of you, and I can only hope that my contribution to this body has been equal to your efforts. As you look ahead, I think the challenges coming before you all in the coming years are really quite significant. Cities are on the brink of major transformation, and I think the past two years have seen a radical transformation in how people live, work, and go about their daily lives. So I know that means that the rules in the land use framework are going to be the discussion, what gets built where, what uses are allowed. All of this is what this body will be considering in the coming years, and I know you are up for the challenge. So thank you again, and I look forward to participating for the balance of this hearing.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again. We appreciate those words and certainly recognize the challenges that you cite and really appreciate your time and energies to this process and to this commission. So thank you. So with that, I'm going to turn to you, Edwin, to see if you can share with people how they may testify if they wish to be heard on today's one item on McDonald Avenue.
My pleasure, Chair Garadnik. And again, good morning, everyone. Good morning, Commissioners. Verbal testimony may be provided online or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak, you must register through the NYC Engage Portal. If you wish to access the hearing, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID. The password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that no matter how you are accessing the meeting, you must first register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be notified and promoted as to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and grant you the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where appear that you are no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. If you're accessing the meeting via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you'll be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the here via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I've described a mo and a mo, and that's shown on the screen right now. It's not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue or not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team of three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of the potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the previous livestream that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing is being recorded.
Excellent. Thank you, Edwin. Welcome to everyone again. Madam Secretary, I'd like to ask you, please go ahead and begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, July 13, 2022. I will now call the role. Chair Garadnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bozart.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here, and when I say here, I mean here. I'm not actually on a desert island. It's just that my City Planning Commission background seems to have disappeared, but I'm here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Duick.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Marine.
I'm here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, June 29, 2022.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Before I ask for a vote on this, I do need to recognize that I think it's excellent that Commissioner Bernie has two options for backgrounds, either the very, very staid and stale City Planning Commission blue backdrop and deserted Caribbean islands. So I think it's good. I like your style, Commissioners. Excellent. Okay, let's go to the minutes. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, June 29, 2022. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers 1 through 11. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, July 27, 2022, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
Great. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve them. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 O's, nay. Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page six. Reports. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 12 and 13. Eighteenth and Randall Avenue zoning, CD 9. Calendar number 12, C 220203ZMX. Calendar number 13, N 220204ZRX. In the matter of an application for zoning map and some text amendments concerning Eighteenth and Randall Avenue rezoning for favorable reports on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Commissioner Bozart.
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't at these hearings.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
I vote yes, and I'd like to remind Commissioner Bernie that that is a quite apropos background for his coastal commission position that we all have.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 12 and 13. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 14, 1959 String Avenue, CD 12, C 220171ZMX. In the matter of an application for zoning map amendment concerning 1959 String Avenue, for a favorable report on calendar number 14. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
At last, the removal of blight. I vote yes.
Commissioner Bozart abstained.
And yeah.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 14. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 15, One Willoughby Square, OCA, CD 2, N 220389PXK. In the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning One Willoughby Square, OCA Office of Court Administration, for a favorable report on calendar number 15. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
I have Commissioner Bozart as abstaining. Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
I'm abstaining. We had some conflicts, so.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 15. Borough of Queens, calendar number 16, Queens DA Office Space at 8002 Q Gardens Road, CD 9, N 220394PXQ. In the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning Queens DA Office Space at 8002 Q Gardens Road, for a favorable report on calendar number 16. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
I have Commissioner Bozart as abstaining. Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 16. Borough of Queens, calendar number 17, Law Department Office Space at 16210 Jamaica Avenue, CD 12, N 220395PXQ. In the matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning Law Department Office Space at 16210 Jamaica Avenue, for a favorable report on calendar number 17. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozart as abstaining. Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Your report has been adopted on calendar number 17. Borough of Queens, calendar number 18, 23106 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay, CD 11, C 210394ZMQ. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 23106 Northern Boulevard Commercial Overlay, for a favorable report on calendar number 18. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
I have Commissioner Bozart as abstaining. Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yeah, I still have some concerns about the commercial overlay. So with that said, I'm going to abstain.
Favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 18. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 19 and 20. Calendar number 19, CD 3, N 220227RCR, Bombay Street, Maguire Avenue, and Mason Boulevard. Calendar number 20, CD 3, N 220254RCR, 15 Memphis Avenue. In the matter of applications for the grant of certifications concerning Bombay Street, Maguire Avenue, and Mason Boulevard, and 15 Memphis Avenue, for adoption on calendar numbers 19 and 20. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozart.
I'm thinking of abstaining on all of these since I wasn't part of reviews or hearings. Thanks.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 19 and 20 have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 21, 22, and 23, 684 Van Duser Street, CD 1, calendar number 21, N 210064ZAR, calendar number 22, N 210065ZAR, calendar number 23, N 210066ZAR. In the matter of application for the grant of authorizations concerning 684 Van Duser Street for adoption on calendar numbers 21, 22, and 23. Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bozart.
And?
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Duick.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Marine.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
Calendar numbers 21, 22, and 23 have been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page nine.
Great. Thank you very much. As we move to the first and only item on today's agenda, I will ask those who are testifying to limit their remarks to three minutes, although I will note that as of this moment, I do not have members of the public signed up to testify today. So I'm going to ask the calendar officer to go ahead and call this item, and we will get started with a team presentation as soon as she does. Go ahead.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 24 and 25, 2080 McDonald Avenue, CD 11. Calendar number 24, C 210174ZMK. Calendar number 25, N 210175ZRK. Public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 2080 McDonald Avenue.
Excellent. Thank you. Applicant team today includes Anna Martinova and Eric Palatnick. And as soon as you both are settled and ready, you can go ahead and begin your presentation.
We are settled and ready, and we shall commence. And I thank you for giving us the time and for running such a respectful hearing and for changing the calendar for City Planning to a format that people could actually read. I give you a lot of credit for that. It's been very difficult to read for decades, and you made it very soon.
Glad you like it.
Yep, it's a good change. Should make a lot of more people involved in the process. Thank you for having me. My name is Eric Palatnick. I'm here today with Anna, and we're happy to be here on behalf of the Jackson Group, which is a local developer for a property at 2080 McDonald Avenue, which is owned in Manufacturing Zoning District. It has frontage on three streets. It's at the very southern end of McDonald Avenue, on Lake Street and Avenue S, as in Sam. It's zoned primarily manufacturing with a sliver of the property being zoned residential, R5. We're asking you permission to rezone the entire block front to a C44L, which would facilitate the development, as I'm sure you already know, of a 66-unit apartment building with ground floor retail with parking for 67 cars at the cellar. I know you've asked questions about the parking at the cellar, and I just want to preface the saying, there is so much parking, it's a specific request of the community board to have that parking. 25 is the required number of spaces. We're providing 66, and we know we're well situated next to mass transit. I just wanted to let you know that. Next slide, please. The next slide shows you a little bit about Jackson Group, so we'll click through that. Next slide, please. Here's a good picture of the property in all of its splendid glory. The property is owned manufacturing. It used to be an office, one-story office building. It's depicted in the top-left corner. The applicant currently has Yeshiva in there, which they have altruistically given the space to use while they need it on a short-term basis. And that Yeshiva is being relocated to a new permanent home that they have constructed and will ready the site for development. You could see the subway staircase walking right down in front of the site on McDonald Avenue. We have spoken to the MTA, and they do not want us to put an elevator in. We spoke to them about that at first, and then they declined the request. So I know that was a question of one of the Commissioners. Next slide, please. The next slide gives you a fairly good depiction of where the property is situated. It speaks for itself. Most importantly, for those who are familiar with this end of Brooklyn, you can see Yeshiva Mag and David is just a few feet south of us. It's the big building in the lower-left corner. You could see, as we move to the right on the screen, some taller buildings, and some taller buildings, of course, are speckled around and match the height of what we're seeking to do. Next slide. The next slide shows you the proposed zoning district. When it pops up. Actually, next slide, please. I apologize. Next slide. This shows you the proposed zoning district. And I see I'm running out of time, so I'm going to click right ahead now to the numbers page. If you can click to the page on the affordability, and I'll just stop there on the discussion, and I'll leave it there for a discussion point. If you can click to sheet 12, please. It's labeled 12 in the lower-right corner. There you go. This was the question of the Commissioners. I believe it was the Commissioner Vice Chair Knuckles asked the question of why we are at 80% affordability. Suggesting to you that we have worked very closely with the community board and the council person well in advance of this hearing. And the request to leave it at 80% was made of the council person and of the community board, primarily for a couple of reasons. One is we still capture the area income targets that Commissioner Knuckles mentioned. There are six units at 60% AMI in the blended average. And I also wanted to call out that, of course, as was also pointed out in review session yesterday, the 421 has expired. The combination of those two have lent support in the community as well as from a council member to request 80% AMI as our requested AMI. Anna is here and should be happy to speak to that in greater detail. If you give me more time, I'd be happy to show you the plans. Otherwise, you'd be happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Okay, go ahead. Why don't you take, let us go through. You're the only item on the agenda today. So let's have you take a couple more minutes and do it, and then we'll give Commissioners a chance to post questions on parking and anything else.
Great. If I could ask the screen controller to proceed ahead to where the renderings commence. It should be on Plan Sheet 18. Or Screen 18 or 17, either one. 17 nor 18. There you go. This gives you a fairly good depiction of the building, so you can understand the action and what we're seeking to have created. The C44L is a relatively new zoning district. There's only been one other building that I know of approved pursuant to it. It's created to butt directly up against the elevated rail on McDonald Avenue. You can see that on the right side of the screen with a setback above the fifth floor against the rail line. The building is primarily built and designed in conjunction with a lot of work from the community board to orient most of the bulk of this corner that you're looking from. If you go now to the next screen, you'll see what I'm talking about. Next slide, please. The next slide is going to show you the low-rise scale of Lake Street. We spent the better part of two years working very closely with the community board to create what you see here, starting to the left of the green awning. It looks like a townhome. That is a townhome. That will be maintained in the R5 district. That's a part of the project site. The green awning is where the daycare starts. That was asked to be on Lake Street, where it's a little more quieter. Also, you can see it's a low-scale building on the Lake Street side. It's four stories tall. Again, that was a request of the community board. The residential entrance is on Lake Street as well, with no commercial entrances on Lake Street whatsoever. That again was a request of the community board. So the entire development was created in a way that takes advantage of the C44L that City Planning created as well as responding to the concerns of the community and respecting the low-scale nature of Lake Street, which I think is important to point out, the efforts that the councilmen and the community board 11 have made on that front. Next slide, please. Next slide just gives you a good close-up image of what I was just depicting. And I'll ask the screen controller to click a few slides forward now, and you can go right to a plan, which is on Plan Sheet 2 in the top-right corner. and you can go right to a plot, a plan, which is on, on plan sheet two in the top-right corner. One more slide. Next slide, there you go. This gives you a good depiction for what the building looks like in a plot plan. Uh, you could pause right there. That's great. That's where it's going to go anyway. There were questions. No, you can go back to the parking plan. That's great. You can click forward, but that was great. Plan sheet three is great. Plan sheet three depicts the parking area. He's about to go back to that, hopefully, or whoever's controlling the screen, he or she. I apologize. I presumed it was a male. The screen here shows you the ground, the, the low-grade cellar level that has parking for sixty-seven cars. We know this is a concern of the borough president, and it's ongoing discussion at the city council right now to eliminate parking. We are overparked by about thirty-five cars. The reason we're overparked is because in this area of Brooklyn, as I said earlier, they do respect the parking as a requirement because they feel most people have cars. Having said that, uh, we know your concerns and the concerns we've heard about parking being a waste of space. Uh, there will be two-car elevators, which you can see at the cellar level. He's not on that, we're not on that page, plan sheet right now, plan sheet two. Uh, but those elevators will be controlled by an attendant who will then take the cars up and down. That is essentially our application. I think I've, uh, given you enough of an overview that I can open it up for any questions you may have, and I thank you, Chair Gradnick, for giving us the time to, uh, make the presentation.
Great, thank you. Um, if you didn't, if you didn't use the space for parking, um, what, what other options would you have here?
It'd most likely be utilizing some sort of storage, probably for the retail that's upstairs. Maybe we'd find some type of user that doesn't require any light there, maybe a, a billing department or something like that, where, where people aren't so, uh, desirable while they're working for, for any sort of, uh, window space, but it's, it's, obviously, it's very undesirable to put people below grade in any sort of working environment. So it would probably be stores of some sort for the building and, as well as for, uh, the commercial space.
Okay, thank you. Let me see if there are questions here from the commission, Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. If you could just pull up the schematic first-floor plan, uh, for a second. Uh, I had brought this up, and this originally came to us for certification, and one of the questions I had was with regards to queuing. And I know this is really a Department of Building, probably, item that will come up, but I want to know if there was any additional thought into this, because from my experience, when you have attended parking and you have the elevators, when the cars pull in, the D O B would typically ask for queuing, which means you would have to push back that elevator core, which means it would have impacted your commercial and your square footages. So I was just wondering if there was any thought process that went in to that.
Yeah. We did hear your comments, and I, I went through it with the architect. There is external reservoir space that can handle three cars, they believe. They think that will satisfy the Department of Buildings. They also projected through their analysis, and this was when there were more units, in the, in the worst-case scenario, that there would be thirteen in-and-outbound trips during the peak hours. Again, the, the space is being parked by the people that live in the building. So, and as you've, as the commissioner has pointed out, we are right on top of mass transit, so as much we are providing the parking, we don't anticipate there'll be a tremendous movement in and out any particular time. But your point is well-made. Uh, it is an issue with the parking, uh, the elevators. Uh, they do, are of course slower and don't allow as much queuing room as a ramp would. Uh, but we have checked it out, and we feel that our numbers, uh, the volume that's going to be occurring will support the use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Duick.
Uh, thank you. Erica, on Monday's review session, I made some comments about the expiration of four-twenty-one A. Can you, can you speak to the commission about how that would impact your project and the timeline? And when is your anticipated, uh, begin date, end date?
It, it doesn't impact us. We're shovel-ready, and it doesn't impact us for a couple of reasons. The first reason is the, and it's, it's a heartfelt conversation about the four-twenty-one, the M I H options. Option level two gives the developer a standing chance of doing it without any government subsidy. Uh, option one makes the numbers very, 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 very close. In this case, we have requested to be at option two. So the expiration of the fourth, and that's primarily because of the expiration of four-twenty-one, as well as discussions we've had that people in the community are satisfied with that, but nonetheless, uh, the four-twenty-one, I think, is, it, you know, for this particular project, it will not impede its ability to move forward for the reasons I just stated.
And thank you. And I'd also like to say kudos to your team on getting unanimous vote by the community board. So.
Thank you.
Yes, that does not happen every day. Uh, let us go to Commissioner Bernie.
Well, thank you. Uh, thanks, Eric. Um, you had, uh, we, we referenced the, on the parking issue again, uh, that we, there were discussion, review on the sort of wisdom of providing parking spaces off-street parking in, in a transit zone. And you'd also reference today, uh, the fact that the borough president, or no, so was also questioning that wisdom, and you mentioned that there was a discussion going on at city planning, at city council, rather. Um, I'm just wondering i- in that process, would you, can you foresee a situation where you might eliminate that parking? And will that process and that decision happen before this project goes for a vote?
The, the decision probably will not, but let me just give you, I'm glad you're opening the door for us to discuss it a little bit, because it caught me off-guard the first three or four times I've had this discussion. I've had this discussion primarily in community board eleven and community board fifteen, who have both been quite adamant on this issue at their meetings. They feel that the people that are moving into these, uh, apartments are, are either older people or younger people that are coming out of homes, that are coming out of suburban settings in Brooklyn. So they're either young families that are in their, their, their early twenties and, and, and first starting that are coming out of the homes that they grew up in, in Brooklyn that had cars, and, uh, they're, and they're older folks that might be moving out of their homes that have cars. So they don't feel, the community board didn't feel that you'll, you'll shake that mentality in people so quickly. I think it's going to take a little bit of proving to the community board. We'd rather not take it out, because we did make a promise to the community board, but having said that, we'd be interested in having more ongoing discussions. We share the opinion. It's an incredibly expensive endeavor to build the space and to just use it for parking, as opposed to something you could generate, uh, some income out of, or put to productive use.
But, but you don't see this being resolved before it comes back to us for a vote?
No, if only because we've, it's, we put it there in response to the community's requests. If it was something that you wanted to see removed, uh, you know, we wouldn't necessarily debate you on that point. I don't know if that's my position to do that, but it, you know, I did make a promise to the community that we would, we would include it in our plans. I'm, I'm not opposed. I understand the perspective of removing it. I also understand their perspective, so I'm sort of in the middle on it. Uh, but, uh, I do understand you're suggesting, and, uh, I don't think you see it in every other community, and I'm out there at every single community board. It happens to be in, in, in the southwestern part of Brooklyn that you see a very strong, uh, you know, car culture. Probably seen in some neighborhoods in the
Yeah. No, I Yeah, I understand what you're saying, and, and, and on the one hand, you know, the policy to encourage public transit, to eliminate car use, to move to the mo- the most sustainable situation for the city in general, uh, is often up against individual personal desires to have a car and park it. I, I understand that, but I think, you know, personally, anyway, I would like to see our pressing ahead with eliminating parking and car use as much as we can, and one hates to see examples of new buildings where we're not only meeting the old, uh, zoning requirement, but doubling it, and it just seems counter to our current thinking, that's all, so.
And I agree with you, and I really, uh, I would say to you, it comes from the community. It's, it's born at the, the very grassroots level. So if it's a discussion, you know, I'd like to have it, uh, but it's, uh, it comes from a deeper place than just me.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernie. Commissioner Cerulo.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Eric, quick, quick question. Um, i- in reviewing the Borough President's recommendation, which we just received, and looking at, um, sort of the rendering that's on the cover of the presentation, I'm, I'm sort of just drawn to ask a question that relates to sort of design and sustainability. Um, I know that if, when we look at the, the building rendering, you could see, you know, what obviously is, or is at least can be perceived as some sort of a green roof. And I know sometimes designs are just provided to, you know, create a, a vision. Can you let us know whether or not what we're seeing is in some way reflective of what will be developed, um, and if you've obviously had a chance to look at the Borough President's recommendations, um, already, you know, whether some of those things that relate to sustainability that i- in and on the building itself, and then there are a couple of items that he mentioned in terms of off the building, but in, you know, adjacent to the building or in the street or community around it, whether or not those things are, are things the developer is, is looking at accomplishing.
Yes, and thank you for bringing those up, and we have a letter pre-prepared that we will be submitting to the commission that responds to everything you just suggested, and I will mention a couple of them here. And, uh, while you're brought that, I, I was remiss in not mentioning that thirty-two B J is, uh, signed an operating agreement with us, and they will be the, uh, building management services. And that was also in the Borough President's, uh, inquiry, was as far as, uh, Brooklyn-based, uh, suppliers and contracts, as well as, uh, people to operate the building. So thirty-two B J will be involved, and we have a commitment to, uh, local businesses. As far as your specific question, sustainability, yes, it will include a green roof system, as you see in the rendering. There'll be a high-efficiency air-source heat pumps for heating and cooling. Uh, there'll be an E R V system, which I'm, unfortunately, I didn't a- ask what an E R V system means, but it will be supplying air as part of the healthy buildings initiative, and I must learn what that is. There'll be recirculators and all hot water systems, a sixty percent goal of recycled content, and there'll be high R insulation and low U fenestration, which a lot of highs and lows here. Uh, but the point is, the building will have many green features, and we've encompassed all, we included all those in a written summary, uh, that we will submit to your commission. So we've also, uh, we will be coordinating as part of the builder's pavement process with Parks and Parks, Departments of Parks and Recreation, Department of Environmental Prote- Protection, and Department of Transportation to install rain gardens along Avenue S and Lake Street. And I'm sure you may know the applicant here, because he is a very local developer, and I know you're from Brooklyn originally. Uh, the applicant here has committed, uh, with, uh, the MTA to put overhead lights in. They're involved in an initiative to clean up under the elevated tracks, and, uh, they're putting in some lighting under there to, uh, brighten it up and to, uh, clean up under the elevated tracks. So we will try to accommodate all the requests of the, of the Borough President, as well as everybody else.
Well, thank you for that, uh, thorough, um, response, Eric. I, one, one question on the, uh, rain garden issue. Once
Yeah.
if you even know this at this point, once they're installed as um, sort of planned, who, who will maintain them? Um, it's, does it, is this like a contribution? And, you know, even in, eh, let's say, construction and, but I'm calling it a contribution to the city, and then D E P takes that over? Or will there be a continued maintenance responsibility?
Very, yeah, very interesting to bring that up, because this concept has been initiated now for almost a decade, and I've never heard anybody ask that question before. I've never even thought about it. I don't know. I'll find out.
Well, when you're in the business of maintaining things that the city puts in, you think of that immediately, and the one thing that we don't want to see happen is that no one ends up, I use the term owning it, um, because particularly rain gardens, which I have some experience in, which are obviously beautiful and sustainable and creative, are not always the easiest thing to maintain, and if they're not well-maintained, this will just become something that the community will see as a, a blight ultimately. And so there needs to be the underlying support of a program like this, and I say this for whoever is, eh, takes this and runs with it, whether it's the developer or the council should be obviously considering these things too, is that who, who will be responsible for something that's unique and special and, and deserving of the community, so that it doesn't become something that everyone is, you know, complains about that it exists? So, um, just throw that out there, food for thought.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cerulo. Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Thank you, sir. Um, I don't know if this question has, has been asked before, but I, I tend to think it has been, but I'll ask it anyway. Eric, could you just speak to the acoustic treatment for the windows and project, given the proximity to the, uh, to the subway line?
You're all asking the guests, because I'm the only person in New York City making a zoning application today. You're giving me, you got some time, so uh, you're asking great questions, and that's actually what I'm fascinated by, because it's what caused the, the, uh, the C four-four L to be created, which was the advent of the airport glass technology that now mitigates sounds to such a deafening level that you can live there. Uh, you see it up and down the B Q E. I'm sure you've seen all the housing on the Brooklyn Expressway and everywhere, so you know that it's there. Uh, the facades, I have the technical terminology here for you. Uh, the facades facing McDonald Avenue, which is where the train is, obviously, will, will require window wall attenuation at thirty-five D B A below the rail line. And those windows above the rail line are going to be at thirty-one D B A. So that's, uh, what I'm told is a very comfortable audible level and one that, uh, people can live in and, 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 and reside in. Uh, I don't know. I've never lived or been in a building when the train's gone by. I gotta imagine it still vibrates a little bit. I can't imagine it doesn't. Uh, we've all been in buildings in the city when you could feel the train. Uh, but they are, uh, able to, you are able to live there quite comfortably at those D B A levels.
Would those, would, would, would that cover the entire, uh, complex, including Lake Avenue? Or would that, would that just be limited to McDonald?
That's just the numbers I have on McDonald. I can get you what the numbers are on the Avenue S and the Lake Avenue side. I don't have that in front of me right now, but I'd imagine just, uh, I'm presuming that they would drop on those sides of the buildings, because they're not directly facing the, the rail line. But I could find out, and I will, and we'll get that back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Eric, yes, you are correct to observe that, uh, since you are the only item, uh, on our agenda today, we booked the whole afternoon, uh, for you on so we're, we're good. We're ready to go here.
Keep going.
Let me, yeah, let me go to Commissioner Bozard.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to add my voice to, um, uh, the concerns around parking and Commissioner Bernie's comments. Um, I appreciate the position you're in, uh, but I do think it's a real shame to feed into that expected demand and take on that cost, um, in such a transit-rich area. Um, but I have a related, somewhat related question. You went pretty quickly through saying that, um, the MTA did not want your help in adding an elevator to the elevated train line. Can you say a little bit more about those conversations? Yeah.
Thank you. This is the first time we've interacted, and thank you for your commentary and for, uh, introducing a, a subject. Uh, the MTA does come to us on every single application we have near their subways or, or rail lines, and the communicator there is Munson, uh, Park, who is, uh, Munson Park, excuse me, who is incredibly, uh, communicative and easygoing and easy, easy to discuss things with. She did come to us, approached us about two years ago. We discussed the feasibility of putting an elevator in. We accommodated MTA and actually designed around it to accommodate it, and then Munson got back to us and advised that they no longer desired to have an elevator there. I don't know what their rationale was. Uh, we were ready to accommodate them, uh, but they decided against it. And that's the MTA that made that decision. We are, we stand ready to accommodate them. We understand that it's a, it's a requirement if they choose so.
Okay, that's helpful. I was, I was curious if they had given you a rationale, but understood.
Yeah, no, she, I'll tell us the rationale. She literally, and, and, uh, we could talk to Munson and try and find out if you wanted. Uh, we'll, we'll send her an email and ask her and call her. And she's very communicative. We'll ask her, just so you know.
I think it's worth understanding, since it's, um, I know that that's conversation, um, that usually they have with developers, and it's an area that, um, my understanding is could benefit from, uh, accessibility, so.
Yeah, we'll tell you what her was. I'm willing to bet that she has access, she had figured out accessibility in another location and didn't need it. That's this gut feeling I had, but I never asked her. I'll find out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, one thing, just in the interest of continuing the discussion with Eric, you know, I just wanted to let him know that E R V is energy recovery ventilation, and it's a a method of capturing the heat that's leaving the building through the ventilation as a way of saving energy. So if we wanted to have a discussion about that, we could, we could go there.
Thank you. I usually know every term I read, and I must have missed that one, so thank you for educating.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, okay. Uh, thank you very much. Um, that is all we have from, uh, the commission. Uh, so, uh, Eric and, uh, thank you for, uh, your presence here today. I, I will note, uh, that we do not have members of the public, uh, signed up to testify uh, one way or the other, uh, today. Um, so I'm going to give a final call here to see if there's anybody else from the public, or anybody from the public at all, who wishes to speak on this item. Seeing none, we're going to close the hearing, uh, on this item, and Madam Secretary, I'm going to ask, ask you if there's any other business before, uh, the commission today.
No, Chair Gradnick, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the N Y C Engage portal through G C P's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, one-twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two-seven-one.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, commissioners. Uh, thank you to our applicant, uh, uh, today, and, uh, with that, uh, this remotely-held, uh, meeting is adjourned. Commissioner Ortiz, thank you again. We will miss you. We'll, we will see you soon.
Best wishes, Marissa.
Yes.
Absolutely, Marissa.
All the best.
Stay in touch, Marissa.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye.
We are adjourned.
The time is ten fifty-six A M.